I'm here, but I'm having a lot of trouble on the hearing. There's a lot of feedback. I can't hear anything, honestly.
Okay, thank you for that, Dr. McLean. We'll put on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I would ask you to stand for the President. Congratulations to the lab. The citizens of America, in the very honor of which this stands, quination of the God, liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. Okay. Just a reminder, as we have done for the last couple of months, I've already written down by written call, again, I dare you, even if you're face to face, to identify yourself to the record. As for, again, a reminder, same person at a time speaking, so we had no trouble transcribing this, okay? I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the June 23th school meeting. President, this is Mr. Schaefer. You have minutes.
Second.
That was Pat Schaefer. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing on, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mrs. Liker. Yes. Mr. Hutt.
Yes.
Mrs. Oger.
Yes.
Mrs. Parker.
Yes.
Dr. Plane.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Shaker.
Yes.
Mr. Seckert.
Yes.
All right, thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Stand some of.
In a second.
Motion second on discussion. Hearing on, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mrs. Liker. Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Oger. Yes. Mrs. Parker.
Yes.
Dr. Plane.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Shaker.
Yes.
Mr. Seckert.
Yes.
You were dead. When we recognize the public, we would ask that you hit your raise your hand button on the computer screen. At that point, give your name and address for the record. Citizens' comments or questions are welcome with a limit of five minutes per presenter. Questions and comments concerning individual staff members, students, or your own children's problems will not be addressed at a public meeting. Your comments will be given consideration by the board. However, the board may choose to not provide a response on your issue this evening. So anyone have anything they would like to share with the board?
Here we have a hand raised. If Daniel Sampson would please go ahead.
Hi. My name is Daniel Sampson at 415 Clemens Drive in Gilbert. My question, you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. My question, based on all the information so far that I've read and seen and discussed with my wife, with our children in different age groups, we are currently planning on a at-home program through the school. Has to start the first semester period. More for the safety of our children than anything else. However, based on how things will be changing, my next concern is how would the adoption, if we need to change that process for the next marking period or going forward the rest of the year, back into a school setting, work with our children, based on how the teachers and rooms are being set up for the spacing? Are you going to have some kind of lineup or limited number of people that can transition in and out for the next period to try to keep that balance? And what happens if you get a flood of people trying to get back in and don't have the spacing? Or has that already been discussed and looked at?
So if I understood your question there, we're going to have to pivot between modes this year. Tonight, the school board will be approving a specific mode of instruction through our plan that we have to submit. But then on a minute's notice, as you mentioned, Daniel, we're going to have to be able to pivot from hybrid to possibly really online to possibly, hopefully, face to face. And so I know that there'll be a lot in there. Staff, students, parents.
He's a math student.
We'll do the best we can. But yeah, we're planning for one of those. We're definitely going to be able to pivot between any of the modes.
Because I pulled the hamper out and that's where I cut their paint towels. So they have paper.
Listen, I asked everyone to mute your microphone if you're not speaking. Okay. Daniel, is that any other question?
I think to the best of your ability, yes. Yeah, I think that's just my major concern, not only to my family, but other families. If we go one route and we're told to do that for a period, but then the next wave, it's not optional, we're actually getting our children back, that may end up causing a problem based on work schedule and other things. And we're just trying to do the best we can to plan for that. Obviously, you're at the mercy of everything else going on, so I was just trying to get an understanding of maybe where we were at. But that is probably the best I can get for now.
It probably is. Again, as we've learned in the spring, being adaptable is a definite necessary quality for the most numerous months. So thank you for your question. Anyone else?
Kristin and Dan Pepperick.
Yes, hello, good evening. Thank you. We do have a couple of questions. The first one has to do with, oh, Kristin and Dan Pepperick, we live on 232 Nursery Road in Gilbert. And the question that we have centers around the maintenance and the custodial staff that will be in the schools. And any kind of HVAC changes or stoop ups that are planning on happening before we start to school. Are we planning on hiring new people to the school clean? Have we done that? Are we doing that? And are we going to do anything about the air quality and the filters that are in the schools to help guard against the children that will be there? That's the first question we have.
Yes, we had an operations meeting on Thursday of last week. And we're looking at a lot of things from the operations perspective. But from your first question, yes, the head of our director of facilities is looking at airflow, times, how much, how often it circulates per hour, so on and so forth. He does not feel at this point that we need to hire additional staff, but he did make the comment that he may have to shift staff from second shift to first shift to get more people in the building while the students are there to help with the cleaning and disinfecting. So although he doesn't feel the need to add additional staff, he did say that he felt that he's going to have to add some more people or move people from second down to first for the cleaning and disinfecting.
Okay, and what is...
And again, if we see the need that does arise, if we cannot handle the current situation, we certainly will do what we need to do to make sure the safety of our children is at the forefront.
Yeah. Okay, now, the other part of the question that we had, thank you. The other part, or different question that we have, has to do with the middle school. You know, in the plan that was proposed, you said sixth grade and lower would come back to school full time. And the question, and then everybody from seventh forward would go two days a week, lots of different options, right? So how do you, I have a sixth grader and I have an eighth grader. So how is sending a sixth grader to school full time and then having a sibling go every two days? How is that helpful and not... I'm trying to understand the methodology between that going forward because it's sort of confusing if you're going to allow one in the middle school full time and you're asking the others to stay out part time. What was the, like, what was the thought behind that? How, like, are you planning to keep those sixth graders full time there healthy like that?
Yes, that's a great question. I'll quickly try to get into the methodology and then we can reach out and chat further if we need to. But we heard loud and clear from our community survey that the younger students, there was a concern of the younger students being home alone. And so we started with our numbers, trying to transport students and reduce our class size, which started from the low grades and moved up. So we reached a position that we could get K to 5 transported to school every day. We then went to sixth grade and took a look at those numbers. Our transportation director, who's also our business manager, came back and said, "We can do sixth grade." So then we said, "Great." We said, "Look at seventh grade," and it was not, we just did not have the capacity. We didn't have the buses, the drivers. So we went as far as we possibly could with bringing as many students back Monday to Friday as we feasibly could. So that is why it stopped at sixth. It was, it was, it was as simple as that, I guess. Yes, I realize it's not ideal. Sounds like you have children at multiple grade levels, but that was the best we can do. Thank you. Stacy?
Yes, Stacy Kelly, 36 on 53rd. My question was just, I think I understand that Mondays and Wednesdays, the older children are going to school their month- to- or Tuesdays. Is that correct? Is that the plan?
Yes. Depending on what's approved tonight, the one model is exactly that, the hybrid model, which is what we're recommending as of today. Yes, the seventh through 12th grade students would be in school either Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday. So that would reduce by 50%.
All right, thank you for that information. Other, the point I had is that, wouldn't it present to send the kids to school to ones that are going higher grades, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday be a cleaning day, and Thursday and Friday? That way, if anybody gets them, you're really limiting the cross-contamination kind of between students that are there on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday, if that makes any sense. And it also really helps single parents, I'm a single mom, with enabling to take kids to spend time, maybe to do online school when they're at the badge and do different things. I just thought that made some sense more than it should have.
Thank you, thank you for that thought. We definitely looked at every possible model and scenario that we could, and that was one we definitely looked at. But I appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
That would probably, if you do that, would probably involve bringing maintenance then, you know, on weekends, to have to clean after Friday, and not real desirable.
Yeah, there were many variables that led us to the Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday being the best, the best option. But we definitely looked at a Monday, Tuesday, and then a Wednesday, Thursday. But we can speak more if you'd like. You can give a call in, and I'd be happy to chat more if you'd love that.
Okay, thank you.
Diane? Diane in?
Okay.
Yeah.
Hear me?
Hear me?
Yes.
Diane.
Diane Nettle.
13 Cold Springs Springs Road.
13 Cold Springs Springs Road.
My question was, with the elementary level. We haven't heard any of the school shutdowns. What type of learning?
Okay, so...
Yes, so Diane, I can respond to that. It's Mr. Beals. So we spent a fair bit of time with high school, middle school, which is remote, because that's where they were starting. We continue to meet with elementary. This week, we're keeping up more information related to elementary remote. Since we were starting, we've spent most of our time focused on face-to-face.
Okay, so you're just saying that you're...
Yes, if you're asking when, yeah, once, once we have our mode approved, which is going to occur tonight, then we'll be able to get more information out if you were asking when, Diane.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, sure. Billy, Billy Joe, and Lake? Billy Joe, Lake, if you're still there, do you have a question or a comment? And if there's anyone else, we'll look for the hands for another 30 seconds or so here, and then we'll move on with the meeting.
Hi, comment if that's...
Hey, Matt, this is Beth. There's tremendous feedback. And there are people in the chat who are asking to make a comment.
There are people in the chat asking what, Dr. McLean?
There's people, someone has a comment in the chat, but also can everybody turn off their mics or something? Because there is tremendous feedback going on for someone who's coming in.
Mr. Beals, can you take a look at the chat part and see if there are any questions in there?
Yeah, there are a few questions. The first thing is, as people keep joining, we do not have the ability to mute them right away. So those that are joining, if your microphone is on, we need you to have it off because there's a lot of feedback. Billy Joe had a question. We're just turning off. We do only have one microphone being used here on site, so it's working there. Most of the comments that I'm looking at right now are comments related to the sound, Matt. Don't forget to unmute. Mr. Labuda, you need to turn your mic on.
Hi, this is Beth. It was Shay, she says she has a comment, 718.
Okay, Shay, do you have a comment? Go ahead.
I do. This is actually...
Sorry, Shay.
Sorry, Shay.
Still, that's okay. So maybe I'm the minority. We've all been played by this virus, where we understand that we have to be afraid of it. But I feel like our kids should be in school because there is nothing more important than our kids having face-to-face interaction with their teacher and the staff and the students that they're surrounded by. But I have a lot of people on here, I hear a lot of people on here, who are scared to send their kids back to school, and that is fine. So here's what I propose. If you're afraid to send your kids back to school, offer them something to where they can keep their kids home and give them the instruction and materials provided to where they can keep their children home. But for those who are not afraid to send their children to school, allow them to go to school unhindered and back to the basics to what they need. I understand that's hard for you in your positions because I know there's a lot of other influences that you have to deal with surrounding this. But at the same point, there are a lot of kids who have bad child, well, bad home lives to where they need to come to school to escape that, whether it's food, whether it's abuse, whether it's other things. And I know you have a lot on your plate, you know, to deal with all of that, and I respect that and I understand that. But at what point is this all going to end? At what point is this all going to go back to, as we call before this, normal? At what point are we all going to go back to normal to where we can go to school without masks, without fear, without anything, to where we can all just live, you know, in prosperity and happiness and let kids play out on the playground, be kids, and not have to worry about this? Because eventually, our kids are going to grow up and become adults to where the point they look back and they say, "Yeah, in 2020, I couldn't even go to school, and I couldn't go to school without a mask. I had to sit in my house and be with my parents, who were stressed out to the point where they didn't know what they were going to do, because they would work all day and they would come home and have to teach me school." And I'm not saying that is a target towards anybody else. I'm just saying, I want everybody to think independently and just take the best course of action that you feel is for your kid. If you don't feel safe for your kid to go to school, keep them home. But as for me, send my kid to school. I don't want them wearing a mask all day. I don't want them being disinfected. What's the bottom line? What is, what is the solution to all this? Is it a vaccine? Because if it's a vaccine, my kids aren't getting it. I'm not getting it. My family's not getting it, you know? And that's the bottom line. And, you know, it's, my opinion is, you're going to get the virus, you're going to heal from it. We have 20 school families, and we have 7,000 deaths. And if you do your research, that's, that's a low number compared to everything else, compared to car-related deaths, compared to, you know, heart disease, compared to, you know, just everything. Do your research. That's all I ask. This virus is not the end-all be-all. This is not the end of our society and our children's...
Thank you, Shay's, I think you said Shay's cousin or Shay's family member. I appreciate your thoughts.
Yeah, I thank you for your thoughts, and I can never speak.
Yes, thank you. And just to the one question you had asked, yes, there is an online option for families in the district that are not comfortable doing so. So we do have our own in-house cyber option. So thank you.
By the way, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
All right, we're supposed to move on with that meeting. All right, we will move on. Mr. Kirkpatrick, I think you're with us. Would you like to make any comments for your section here tonight?
Yes, I would, Mr. Seckert. First of all, I would like to double check that you can hear me. I am attending remotely, and I've struggled to hear the comments of the, from the public. So I just wanted to confirm that you guys can hear me clearly.
Yes, we can, Steve.
Okay, thank you very much. Tonight, the administration would like to identify the type of reopening we've selected for the fall. We stated publicly that we would do so on this date at this meeting, and we'd like to follow through on that promise. The health and safety plan that we're asking the board to approve tonight requires us to check a box to designate a reopening model for the fall. And the four choices of those boxes are total reopen for all students and staff, total remote learning for all students, scaffolded reopening, in which some students are engaged in in-person learning, while others are distance learning in some form, and blended reopen that balances in-person learning and remote learning uniformly across all students. It is our recommendation that we start the fall in a scaffolded model, in which some students are engaged in in-person learning while others are engaged, to some extent, in remote learning. This model was described in our recent community update, and in general entails kindergarten through sixth grade, coming every day for in-person learning, and seventh through 12th grade being divided into two cohorts, with half coming face-to-face on Mondays and Wednesdays, and the other half coming Tuesdays and Thursdays. Students participate in asynchronous or remote lessons on the alternate days when they're not here, their secondary students. The scaffolded model allows us to work within the guidelines and requirements of the CDC, Pennsylvania Department of Education, and the Pennsylvania Department of Health. It allows us to implement and evaluate our health and safety guidelines and processes under less populated and more socially-distanced conditions. And we believe it affords us the best chance of staying open while working toward the goal of returning to a traditional school setting with all students back for in-person instruction as soon as, as is possible. The, the scaffolded model focuses face-to-face learning on our younger children, as well as some of our most educationally-at-risk populations. Other advantages include continuing to provide lunch opportunities every day for all children, providing services to support students' social and emotional skill development. Included in this approach, the scaffolded approach, the district has available to families our own in-house online option, the Northern Online Academy. We've shared our ideas and progress along the way and heard from the school community, our educators and our families, through task force meetings, multiple surveys, email correspondence, and phone conversations. And what we've learned is that many are anxious about what the fall has in store. And we want to retain as many teachers and families as possible, knowing that they're anxious about working in and attending our schools. So the scaffolding model is that middle road, if you will, that we feel gets us the most safely and quickly to our goal of full in-person instruction while engaging the most students and minimizing the flight from school by concerned families and educators. Thank you, Mr. Seckert.
And Mr. Seckert, this is Mr. Beals. Just wanted to hit on a couple of things here. We did end our public comment period, kind of briefly here, and there are still several questions that have been posed, and I believe we should take the opportunity at this point to respond to those questions. Billy Joe Lake asked a question. Is, it's my understanding correct that if we do hybrid, then go all remote, that kids will be required to participate in Zoom classes from like 9 to 1, four days a week? And Billy, I can, Billy Joe, I can respond to that. So we do have a set schedule. They, they would follow four of their class periods on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, sorry, Mondays and Wednesdays. So the most that they would have would be four classes. It would follow their schedule. Not all kids have classes, all four periods, periods one through four. Five through nine, every kid would have a lunch at least one of those periods. And for the most part, our kids are looking at about six periods out of the scheduled nine-period slots that they would have face-to-face instruction with, like you said, Zoom classes or team classes that would be scheduled between 9 and 1. That would equate to approximately about three and a half to four hours of work. There would be outside work that would need to be completed in addition to that face-to-face time, and we're aiming for about five to five and a half hours of work per day, per student. So we did want to kind of take into consideration the timing, how long kids would be required to be doing a live meeting, and we also built in breaks, so we have hour-long sessions, but really planning on the 42 minutes that the classes would normally take. So I hope that answers Billy Joe's question. I know she was trying to unmute, but was unable to. We have Amanda Mills was asking a question. Amanda, if you're able to unmute, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I have a 10th grader and a 2nd grader. Now, my 10th grader can do homeschooling. That is not an issue. But my seven-year-old needs classroom structure. He was supposed to have an IEP before all of this started. I mentally cannot home... I mentally cannot homeschool my seven-year-old. It is impossible. He has got, I'm assuming he's got ADD, ADHD. So I mentally cannot school him. And he mentally, he can't do it either. I struggled with him when all of this happened. So he did no schoolwork. So what is going to happen? And with my daughter having an IEP, what's going to happen with her? Because I do feel she needs more structure as well, not as much, but definitely more than two days a week.
The, in the case of your, your youngest child, we would be running school five, five days a week. If I understood that you said that they were seven years old in second grade. So under our, under the scaffolded model with elementary, elementary would be coming in all five days. Certainly if, if the local situation and certainly virus transmission within our community were to necessitate that we have to close schools, then our, our, we would transition to remote learning. Some of that may be within our control and some of that may be governmentally mandated to us. So I certainly, you know, understand where you're coming from. That was some of the feedback we, we received and why we, we looked to prioritize elementary students and, and students that may have special considerations, as you mentioned, so that they could receive the services that, that they need. Crystal Klein has been trying to ask a question. Crystal, if you're able to unmute your microphone?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay. So a couple of questions that I have. Number one, for the high school. Wouldn't it make more sense to have the same group of kids Monday and Tuesday and then bring the other kids in on Wednesday, Thursday, rather than having Group A come in and then, you know, you have to sanitize for Group B versus if Group A is already in there and somebody would have, you know, is sick or whatever, you know, they're still, they're, they're back-to-back. It just doesn't make sense to, number one, spend extra money on sanitation when you have the same group of kids there Monday, Tuesday, and then the other group, you know, Wednesday, Thursday. What was the reasoning for splitting, splitting them up like that?
Yeah, and actually, to, to your point, we're sanitizing in between every day. We're, we're using the cleaning solutions and disinfectants that were, were required with the EPA, you know, mandated disinfectants and cleaners. With the high school, those class periods are, and students are moving throughout the day. So there's mixing of students and there's mixing of desks. So regardless of, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Monday, Wednesday, we're still doing the same procedures and still following through. Some of the process on that came from, you know, consortium of districts as we work together, also looking at things like the VOTEC and how VOTEC was structuring their day and, and trying to figure out how we could do ours. We looked at nine different models, from everything from block scheduling to only a four-period day to flip-flopping. In every one of those scenarios, there was a group that was negatively impacted. And then we had some other requirements as a district, like we're, we're mandated to transport our non-public kids at certain times during the day. So we, we tried to do some things creatively. The AB hybrid model is, is a model that is being kind of promoted as, as a solution to, to some of the other, other pieces. But, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we had looked at alternate days, Monday, Tuesday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, one week, Tuesday, Thursday, the next week. We talked about bringing in one group of kids just for one week and another group of kids for another week. Every one of those has its positives and negatives. And we've settled on the AB hybrid model with the Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday. But definitely a good point, Crystal.
Okay, my next question is, so you're relying on parents to temperature-check their children before school, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So my problem with that is, is parents who work use school as a daycare solution also. Okay, they have to go to work. So they're sending their kids to school with the stomach flu or before they even walk to the classroom, they have double pink eye and they're going to the nurse. Or they threw up at home and now they're coming to school. Wouldn't it make more sense to have the teacher before the child even enters the classroom, just temperature-check that, their, their own classroom rather than relying on parents who some are, you know, rushed to get out the door or, you know, have to drop them off somewhere? I mean, it just doesn't make sense that with all the illnesses that get, you know, put into that school because kids are sick, now you're relying on parents to do the temperature screening?
Yeah, fair question and one that we definitely wrestled with. The CDC did put out guidance last week, actually recommending that schools not mass temperature-check students at, at the student door. We, we had conversations about, you know, why at the student door? Why not before they even get on the bus? Because there's going to be other people on the bus. A lot of things get, go factored into the decision to do that. Staffing a person to do it, who's going to do it? Selecting students as they come through and then indicating, hey, yo, Mr. Labuda, you need to go to the nurse's office in front of other kids lacks privacy, which in most of our kind of medical experiences, there's, there's somewhat of a privacy experience. So we, we did wrestle with that and that just the sheer volumes of kids. We bring in 3,100 kids into our buildings every day. So to do a forehead temperature check just wasn't feasible. We did explore
It is feasible. It is feasible if they're walking through the classroom and the teacher's standing in the hallway saying, hi Johnny, temperature check. Hi Amanda, temperature check. I mean, if a kid walks in and their eyes are bloodshot, how are, are they, what's, there's no privacy measures with that child being sent to the nurse's office because they have double pink eye?
No, I completely agree. I was going to say, we looked into equipment, the handheld temperature readers, actually infrared scanners. We, we have explored every option and just do not believe it's feasible to ask our staff or put our staff in that position or man-staff in the front door or selectively move kids in front of groups of other kids with temperature checks. So, so the decision that we've come to and is supported by the CDC guidelines last week was that we not temperature-check students at, at our doors or prior to entering the building.
Okay, and you're going to have elementary students eating lunch at their desk?
Yeah, that is our plan now, yes.
So you're having all of the students sit at their desk, wearing a mask, and then you're allowing them to take their mask off to eat lunch. Meanwhile, they're chomping with their mouths open, food particles being dropped on the floor, you know, kids flying food across the room. I mean, I can already see that it's going to be a mess. And so they're required to wear a mask, yet they can take it off and eat all over the place. Are they going to sanitize their desks after, sweep the floor after, is a cleaning crew coming in?
Yeah, so we, we do have procedures in place for them to wash the desks before and after. The teachers will be doing that and staff will be doing that, will be utilizing our aides. They, they, the students, in following with the guidelines, the students may not have the masks on if they're more than six feet away. And we have tried to separate our desks as much as possible, limit the caseloads in the classrooms as much as possible so that we can be six feet away. And if six feet away, there's no need for a mask to be, to be on in, in accordance with the guidelines. We're still having recess, so kids will have opportunities during the day to remove their masks. We, we do have them at a desk and we, we'll, we'll limit contact in other spaces with shared devices and shared equipment. Every kid will have their own stuff so they don't have to go through and have contact with, with other materials. But yeah, we, we do have procedures in place for wiping down the desks before they eat and after they eat, washing hands before they eat and after they eat. And if six feet away, they can take the masks off.
So every child in elementary and middle school and high school will be six feet apart, so they do not need to wear a desk in the classroom?
As much as possible, that is our goal. We have some classrooms that are smaller and we can only get 16 kids in there for six feet apart. We have some other classrooms that are a little bit bigger and we can go upwards of 18 or 20 kids. So we do have opportunities at the, at the middle school and high school. We're trying to do the same thing where we're utilizing as much space as possible, separating kids six feet when we can and allowing them to take their masks off.
Okay, and then my other question is, what cleaning crew? Did you, you said you hired additional cleaning, cleaning companies or private cleaning?
No, we're still using our custodians. Mr. Labuda's comment was, we're looking to potentially move what are some of our second-shift employees to first shift, so we had more people during the school day.
Okay, because I can tell you some of the programs that I was involved in and the cleaning crew that they're cleaning, they're not doing a very good job. So you may want to look into the custodials that you have working currently and make sure that they're actually doing their job because, I mean, I can't see that they're walking around, you know, wiping doorknobs off and light switches and all that other stuff. And then what about if in Dillsburg, because I know we have such a great community of business owners and local businesses that would gladly donate, like the, the forehead, like little temperature check? We got it donated with the teachers being able to stand at the door and temperature-check their children as they walk in? Because you're saying that it's not feasible from a monetary standpoint, but if they're donating, then that would take out that.
Yeah, and I would, I would say to be in contact with Jason Young, if, if, we, we have gotten some donations from businesses, things like crayons. We, we were in contact with Catapult and they were talking about the face shields. So I am going to have to move on, Crystal, because our limit has been hit for, for one person, just to honor others. You can certainly reach out to Mr. Labuda or myself if you have additional questions. Don't want to cut you short, but we do have others that have some questions. But thanks for your comments. Jen C. had a question of what is the plan when a student has a positive COVID test? Is a classroom quarantine, et cetera? Jen, there, there is a piece in our document that went out to the community with a plan on, on what would happen in terms of a response to a, a confirmed case of a student. Yes, the room does have to get isolated. We do have to go in and clean it. We, we're working on protocols for, for what would have to happen. There is some, some guidance that was in the public document that was released last week. So there, there are things that we need to do as a, as a school and as a district when there's a confirmed case in a space. But I, I don't want to cut you short. So Jen C., if you have your mic and you, and you want to ask your question in full, go ahead. So not hearing anything from Jen, I'll move on. Abby has a question, Abby McGinnis. Can we provide cleaning schedules of our students' school in specifics about chemicals used? Is there any consideration being given for liability regarding chemical sensitivity and adverse reactions? Yeah, we can, we'll certainly post that. That is information that Mr. Johnson is working on. We actually had our operational meeting, as Mr. Labuda had mentioned earlier, and we had that conversation about the, the materials that we were using in our schools and what that was going to, going to look like. We do have to have that, that information available and it is, it is public information. We'll compile that. I know he refers to things underneath the codes that they are with the company that we use. We'll make sure that that is in understandable language and, and post it as well as what our, our cleaning schedules are. We have been working on those operations, but Abby, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you if you have anything else to add, if I did not answer your question in full.
So much trash from the sidewalk? Someone's trash bag was like open?
Give it to you.
Hi there, this is Abby.
Go ahead.
That did answer my cleaning question. I had just a couple of other quick questions for you too. Are you going to be taking a letter, just a letter from the parent as far as exemption from masking due to a medical condition? Or do you have a procedure to go through, a form to fill out? Are there, I know I've, I've got a lot of confusion trying to figure out what are approved medical conditions and what aren't, according to the state? So if you could answer to that, that would be great.
Yeah, that's a very, very good question. Certainly, as we've looked at the state's guidelines, there's, there's not a requirement for, for proof to demonstrate that there's an exception. Certainly, our nurses will be engaged in that process. We have had the discussion as to whether or not we would ask for something in writing from families. We have not made a final decision on that. That's more of an operational thing at this point. Our goal really with the health and safety plan was to kind of communicate out what our, what, what the potentials were for remote learning. There's a lot of details that we need to figure out between now and, and the start of school year, and that would be one of them.
And then just to follow up to that, are you going to be engaging in any type of contact tracing program, either through the Department of Health, Department of Education, locally, on your own? And what would that look like?
Yeah, excellent question. So we, we have actually been notified by Pennsylvania Department of Education and the Department of Health that they're setting up a separate contact tracing division just for public schools or schools in general. And they'll be providing us guidance as it relates to what we need to do when, when there is a contact tracing. We have unfortunately already had some situations where we've had to engage them and we've had to work through that process for, for giving them the information that we have available at, at the site. So that is something that the state is working on. We do have a contact that we're, we're to contact when we get a confirmed case.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Abby. So continue to look down. I know Cooper had asked a question and the, and the question that had come from, I guess it was Kyle Cooper. Kyle, I don't know if you can unmute your, your mic or not. I know you had sent in an email and I do have that email up. So I'll give you a chance to unmute yourself. If that's unavailable, I'll, I'll read your question from the email.
Hey, thanks. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
So my name is Kyle Cooper, address is 51 Impala Drive in Dillsburg. Just off the top, just wanted to say I appreciate everything that everyone's doing, the various communications from the district and et cetera. I'm sure there have been a number of hours that have gone into this thought and conversations. So the one thing that I wanted to ask about is can someone lay out what the protocol is for if a student is absent due to just sort of, in quotes, illness? I know there was a question asked similar in the comments. How do we differentiate levels of illness? Who follows up with the household to ensure they're following protocol? Certainly, there is enough belief out there that this is insignificant and it just worries me that some might bypass district protocol because it's maybe not that big of a deal. So I have two other questions, but I'll just sort of go at this one at a time with you.
Yeah, so we've, we've been engaging with one of our local doctors that serves as, as a physician for the district as well as our nurses. There is obviously concern around, you know, false positives and false negatives. And a student with a fever does not necessarily mean a student has COVID. And so I think that's the tricky part with, with all of this is, you know, I, I, I look at Major League Baseball in the last 24 hours and go, you know, with, with as many protocols as we can put in place, the best we can achieve is mitigation. There's, there's no attempt here to say that we can eliminate any and all viral transmission. And the, the flip end of that is, is it's quite difficult to also identify with the long list of, of symptoms. And all those symptoms also differ between, you know, young children, adolescents and, and, and adults, what that may look like. So I, I think your question's fair and it comes back to, as a community, we, we need to be able to, to respond to this. And I know it's, 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 it's a divisive topic, but that, that's all we can do is, is, is hope that our neighbors and ourselves can, can be reasonable. So that, that's, that's our only response. The, the nurses can look at symptoms, but again, many of these symptoms are, are also attached to other illnesses that have nothing to do with COVID. So we, we are working underneath, you know, looking at it from a confirmed case when there's truly testing that, that is confirmed and, and, and the suspected cases. But even on the suspect, suspected cases, as you know, they're, they're not all positive. Actually, the vast majority are negative. So it is a difficult situation, Kyle, to, to kind of gauge and, and give, give input on. I know that doesn't answer your question, but it's, it's the reality that we're all in.
Sure, that's fair. Sort of pivoting to, to staff, my other question was, knowing test results are not exactly coming at the speed of light, does the district, have they procured, have you guys procured any kind of expedited testing for employees in order to limit potential staffing shortages in the event of an outbreak of some kind? To limit disruption to classrooms when testing is needed for staff? And, or alternatively, has there been like a beefing up of substitute resources to that end?
There's 139 people on this call. If you're interested in working for Northern York County School District, you can contact Van Giunti because, yeah, we, we're concerned about that. And certainly having staffing, there's the anticipation that we'll have staff that will be out. And so, yeah, that's, that's a need. And I know, I don't mean to joke it with that, but, you know, yeah, there, there's a need here. And so yeah, that's, that's a need. And I know, I don't mean to joke it with that, but you know, yeah, there's a need here in the district. To your question about testing, we are not a testing facility. We're not a medical facility. So we're reliant upon, upon the local doctors, offices, primary care and hospitals to provide those services.
Great, okay, that's fair. And then so just lastly, was wondering if the district has data on any kind of loss of enrollment to cyber schools. My, my concern there is simply, you know, and if the data is not available, is that something that is able to be shared in the future? Just as a taxpayer, I'm just worried a little bit about the impact that could have on the tax base and the ripple effect that causes for all of us as taxpayers.
Yeah, great, great question, Kyle. So I'll reiterate something that Mr. Kirkpatrick said earlier. We do have our NOLA program, which is the Northern Online Academy. We, we have seen an uptick in families interested in exploring that as an option for their children, which is a positive. It's with our teachers and it is about 20% of the cost of, of a student withdrawing from Northern and enrolling at a cyber charter school. So certainly those options are available to our families, but we would like to maintain as many of those as possible. And we've been doing some outreach meetings. Mr. Edwards, who is our high school assistant principal, also oversees our COLA program. And he has been, been hosting sessions, posted some informational pieces, and we started enrolling students this week in our program. Middle school and high school has not seen a change in enrollments with cyber. We're, we're right about where we were when we ended last school year. We did not have an elementary program before. We've had 130 parents interested. We've had 21 express an interest to date to enroll their children in that program, but enrollment just started on Monday. So it is still very early, but we, we have seen an interest at the elementary level in our cyber program. Certainly, that's a better option for taxpayers than a cyber charter, but families do have those options available to them. We'd like to point them towards NOLA.
That's all I have. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Kyle. Denise Fisher has a question. Denise, I'll read your question if you want to unmute yourself and add to it. So just two questions here. Hypothetical child in third grade tests positives. There's a sister in ninth grade. What's the process here? Mr. Labuda, do you want to respond to that one? I can certainly take it if you want to give a head nod. Okay, so as we look at the situation, yeah.
Mr. Beal, each time I unmute, it creates a ton of feedback for everyone and I get texts saying, please mute, please mute. So if you don't mind taking the questions you could take, I'll stay muted so then the feedback cuts down. Thank you.
Yeah, so the, the, the short answer is yes. When, when we're looking at cases, suspected cases, confirmed cases, and there's others in the household. Their requirements do, do, do dictate that the family members also remain isolated or quarantined, depending on whether or not the case is a confirmed case or a suspected case. So it could potentially impact that ninth grade older, older child in the home. Second question that Denise Fisher had, and then Denise, if you, if you want to unmute, we can get to your question. Is it possible for our children in the middle school to study remotely only as opposed to attending the academy? Allowing our kids to follow lessons along Zoom and other video. Wonderful question. We explored this option quite a bit. We were looking at installing video cameras within classrooms to allow for that feed. There were a lot of technical hurdles to, to, to get over as well as trying to ask our staff to manage face to face as well as manage online environments. It was, was, was an awful lot to ask. So Denise, we did look at that as an option.
As an option.
It was something that we, we considered that was really not something feasible. We chewed on that for about two weeks. We do have plans in place for what would happen if a student were to have to quarantine for 10 to 14 days. And what would happen? We would treat that like we do other long-term illnesses, short-term illnesses, sorry, with, with homebound and leverage remote there. But in terms of live remote for every class, that was just something we could, we could not accomplish. And Denise, if you had anything to add, go ahead and, and add. I'll pause and wait.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I appreciate you addressing those questions. And the second question was probably our most curious. Our kids love their school. They love their friends. They love their teachers. And I don't love the academy, to be honest with you. I really love the cyber option because my ninth grader is extremely intelligent. And I think there's some classes that she would never have offered to her at Northern. And so, but she doesn't want to do that and I don't blame her. She wants to be a Northern kid. I want her to be a Northern kid. I graduated from Northern. I don't want any of that to change. And while our kids are, like, we're 99% sure they won't return because we have a high-risk kid in our family. And so we really can't have our kids return. And it breaks our heart for them not to be with their friends. And like when we were in the springtime, at least they could text each other and say, hey, I didn't understand number 25. Can you help me with this? And they still felt part of a team and a group and included. And I really, it breaks my heart that because our family dynamic and we have someone that's at high risk that, you know, our other kids, we have a middle school and a very new high schooler that doesn't get to do this with her friends. So it, it really bothers me. And I know that this is a weird time for everybody and you guys are just trying to do your best. And I would not want to be in your shoes and I appreciate you guys. But I guess, you know, going two days, why can't they just do all the days at home then? Like if my kids are the Monday, Wednesday, they still have to figure out Tuesday, Thursday and whatever, however that's going to work. Why can't they just always be home? Like, you know, like what if, like you said, okay, so you have to figure out the quarantine. So if we send our kids and one of them's with someone that had a fever, now we're all home for a little bit anyways. And then maybe another one of them has a fever in their classroom and now we're home for a little bit. I have a feeling it's going to be this interesting juggling act anyways, possibly. I mean, hopefully not, I guess. But it would just be nice for them to still feel included and with their, their friends.
I, I empathize with your comment and I completely understand the motivation behind it. And, and we continue to meet weekly with our principals and look at how we could potentially do, support our students. And certainly the case you've indicated is something that we've looked at. We're not done our planning and we've indicated that several times. I think over the next four to six weeks, there's a lot that could, could impact what it looks like in our scaffolded model. You know, your question has come up on the surveys that we've asked for parent, from parents last week. And it's come up, you know, even in our discussions. So know that we are considering it. We're looking at how we could, could meet those needs. And I think your question is a fair question for us to continue to chew on.
Yeah, I would appreciate that because if there was any way to do that, I mean, I, I'm happy to have my kids home. I love having them here. We're having a good time. But you know, however, I can help facilitate that I would. And I have a feeling there's a couple other families that would do the same thing. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Maureen has a comment. If a child is sent home sick with any possible COVID symptoms, will they automatically need to stay home for 10 to 14 days or a COVID test in order to return? How will those symptoms be differentiated from cold, etc., and return to school? So yeah, under, underneath the current guidance that we have, and again, that's the guidance we have here on July 28th. If, if there are symptoms, multiple symptoms, not just one, but multiple symptoms, two or more, that, that would be indicative of COVID, we're supposed to operate as if it's suspected. And then that 10 to 14 days, as you say, would be something that would be required both of our staff and of students before they would be able to return to school. So it is somewhat dependent upon the situation. And this goes back to another question on if somebody in the household, same sort of thing, it's dependent upon the situation and whether or not it's a confirmed case or suspected as to when someone could return. So there, there is the multiple symptoms and we would be following the guidance that we have. At the point right now, what it is, is multiple symptoms on the list that we, that we have. So Maureen, if you have anything to add and you've been unmuted, go ahead and speak.
Hi, no, I don't have anything to add to that. Thank you for answering the question.
You're welcome. We had a couple other questions on, on temp checks and that is something again that we continue, continue to look at. But in our plan as it is today, we're not planning to temp check children. A lot of you have given some comments, at least several as I scroll down through the comment field about volunteers and temp checks and, and potential external readers. You know, yes, we're looking at that. I would say, I think that came from, from one of Shay's relatives. Shay, if you want to be in contact with Mr. Labuda or myself, if you're aware of somebody in the community, we will certainly look at that. A lot of the equipment we were looking at was very, very expensive. Got a question here on, it looks like oil. Can you explain what recesses is compared to the rest of the day? So I'm not exactly sure. So if you want to unmute H. Hoyle. So recess, we, we will be having recess at the elementary level. They'll be going out to recess in cohorts, meaning they'll go out in classes. We'll have designated areas where classes and different, different schools have different areas that they can use. We are prioritizing our kindergarten equipment for the little guys. There is a requirement that we wipe down railings and that sort of stuff in between cohorts. So, so we're eliminating equipment usage and shared equipment, but we're going to try to have recess as, as, as normal as possible. Just kind of avoiding mixing of whole grade level groups or two grade levels at a time. They'll be going out with their class and have designated spaces where they can be kids and run around the playground. So if I did not answer that question in full, I'll go ahead and stop talking and see if H. Hoyle.
Sure, yes. My question was more along the lines of, is this a time there without masks? And how does that compare to other times where they are required to wear masks, but now they are freely roaming? I don't understand the difference.
So the, the difference goes along with the guidance that we've received from the Department of Health. When students are able to be six feet apart or more, there's not the requirement for a face mask to be on. And certainly if we can be outside or have classrooms outside or be, you know, attending recess outside, there's, there's not the mandate to have a mask on. Once they get inside six feet and certainly once they get inside the building, then, then the masks start to become more of a requirement. So the ability to take the masks off for recess is because of the, the space and being outdoors. And that's in adherence to the, to the guidelines we have to date.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Kristen, I have a question. Do kids wear masks on buses and all the way until they are in the classroom? Yes, Kristen, go ahead and unmute and then I'll let you kind of chime, chime in. The, the requirements of the busing, because we cannot maintain that six feet, would require our kids to have masks on until they were to get that sort of environment. So go ahead, Kristen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, again.
Okay, I'm not even sure, you know, what to even ask or like, I don't even know what to do for, as in like my choice, like what to do. Cause like my son is better off learning in school, but like, it's just, I'm not even sure what to ask. So like basically when you're saying, so like say they're in the classroom, somebody's tested positive. So like the whole classroom's on quarantine. Like you said, you don't have a protocol yet. Like do you call the parents? Like, sorry. Do you know what you're going to do yet? Like, I don't know if I missed that question.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And if you wouldn't mind muting, there's some background noise and I think everybody will hear a little bit better. Sounds like we're having fun. The, so yes, we do have a protocol and the protocol is very specific and it's, it's one that's been handed down to us from the state. So when we have a suspected or confirmed case, we have to isolate that individual. We have to notify families. We have to notify families through that contract tracing that was mentioned earlier of anybody who would have been in that classroom or on that bus. We have to then disinfect and clean those areas. And so it can get very wide very quick, which is why, you know, especially at the younger grade levels, we're trying to limit their contact with, with other kids in other settings. Because as soon as we start mixing all of that, there's a lot of different people that need to be notified. So there's several steps we have to take when we have a confirmed case. Certainly, one of those is notifying not only the family of, of, of the child that was impacted or potentially staff member, but then everybody else that could have potentially come in close physical contact with that person. And that's, that's the guidance we have to follow. Go ahead, Kirsten. I think you unmuted. Go ahead.
No, that's okay. I think that's all I have. I don't, I'm just going to listen and wait to see what to do and then I'll go from there.
Sound, sound advice, I think for all of us. The, some questions on the start of the school. That's one of the items that's for the board this evening to vote on. We do have an alternate calendar that would start school on September 8th. And that's an item on this agenda that will be voted on later this evening. Jackie, what will kids do, will be doing on days that they're not in class? For instance, Monday, Wednesday, are they going to be Zoom classes or mandatory online classes with the teacher and online education on those other days? So that's exactly the case. There'll be two, there'll be two days where they, where they would be face to face in school. The other three days, they would have online assignments. We're asking teachers to post videos that would be what we call asynchronous. So they're not tied, they're not live, but they're, they're instructional videos that our teachers would be producing for three lessons to be completed on the off days that students are not in, in school. Again, about five to five and a half hours of work per day per child when they're not in school on those days. So that question came from Jackie. Jackie, if you wanted to unmute, we'll go ahead and hopefully I answered your question.
Yes, now I was just kind of confused about whether that was a different module or if that was for the kids who are doing the asynchronous days. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. And, and you know, the goal then is, is if we were to have to transition to remote, that same model would apply for secondary where there would be two days a week, they'd have live lessons and three lessons that would be the asynchronous lessons that they would do on their own on those off days. We would be looking at elementary, increasing the, the live video time with, with teachers based on the feedback we got in the spring.
And that's where I was confused. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Gina, I would like to ask a question, but I don't have my, Gina Henley.
Hi, I think my question was actually answered by someone else. I was concerned with the cyber option that Northern is giving. While I do love that Northern is offering a cyber program for the elementary students this year. As a family with high risk and myself, I don't have the means to teach my own child. So I feel like Northern's option is the parents or the children teaching theirself. Well, I need somebody to be able to teach my child because I'm in the hospital approximately two weeks every six weeks. So I, I'm almost in tears thinking about leaving Northern, but I have to do what's best for my family and have my child be taught by somebody else. So I was just, I think that you guys have done the best you can and it's probably just a matter of not having the means, like you said earlier, to have teachers teach through the Northern COLA Academy.
Yeah, Gina, great question. So the, the vendor doesn't provide the, the, the opportunity for the live synchronous lessons. That's something that we would manage. Their recommendation was one hour per subject area or four hours per week for the four core areas. ELA, math, science and social studies. We control that however, and certainly the feedback we receive from parents. Mr. Edwards and myself, Mr. Sauer, who's at the middle school and oversees our COLA program as well, was that, that, that wasn't sufficient. We are looking at how we can increase the amount of live lessons that would, 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 would take place. And so we are exploring that. We understand the concern, especially with the youngest kids. A lot of the online cyber education that's there is, is, is self-directed and independent. And the younger you get, the, the more difficult that is and the more it requires families to be engaged. And certainly your situation limits, you know, the opportunities for that and working families and there's a lot of other things. So I completely understand. We are looking at how we could increase the live, live time and we've got some options there.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Do you know when that information will be out or a decision will be made about more live options through Northern? Because we would really like to stick with Northern, but we just need that extra support with teachers teaching our children.
Yeah, and that's another fair question. Really, it's dependent upon staffing. And the staffing is going to be drive, driven by the number of students that enroll in the program. So the more students that enroll, the more likely that we're going to have to, you know, assign some of our staff to full-time COLA teachers where they would have to, to do that as their, as their teaching assignment. When that happens, we have more capacity to be able to do the live lessons. Right now in our current model, our teachers are teaching during the day and supporting the online learning as an extracurricular contract. So it's in addition to their teaching day. So if that were to change, we would, we'd have more. And again, it's all dependent upon. have more. And again, it's all dependent upon enrollment, and that just started this week. So I do suspect it's going to change, but that's me projecting what I see has happened just in the last two days.
Thank you. I understand, and we appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you, Gina. So we'll bypass the positive notes, but I greatly appreciate those of you that have given some positive comments. And I'm going down through the list now. Wendy Durka, or I think was just making a comment about her older child wanting to come to school. And certainly, our hope was to get as many kids in school as possible. The biggest challenge to that was the requirements for us to socially distance kids. So our buildings, the size they are, and how many classroom spaces we would have at any one time to put kids into, to keep them socially distanced, that was one of the challenges. And as Mr. Labuda mentioned earlier, transporting and feeding students underneath those requirements that we have, the bigger the school, the more challenging that is. And so we ran into those issues at the middle school and high school. Billy Joe, coming back to the list, Billy Joe Lake had another question. If a child is positive, will those in class also have to quarantine? Because I think CDC recommends anyone in direct contact. Yes, Billy Joe, the guidance that we have currently is anyone in close physical proximity for 10 or more minutes. So it is possible that there would be other students that would have to quarantine. We did have the matrix that talks about our school closing and what that could look like and how many days that could imply. But yeah, if there was a positive case, it would have a ripple effect that would impact several, several kids, staff and buildings. So as positive cases, confirmed cases were to take place, it would have an impact in terms of schools remaining open. Going down through, I think there's some, we've answered some questions. Yeah, so I'm at Amanda, 804, asked the question, what, when will parents find out what kindergarten will look like? The play-based education promise no longer sounds feasible, given the current circumstances. So yes, this has been a frequent question of our kindergarten parents. And I'll go ahead and, I think Amanda, you may have unmuted, so I'll let you speak for yourself, and then I'll respond.
I did unmute.
Matt, could you look to see if somebody is unmuted? Because there is some feedback that's going on. Thank you. So that is a common question we're getting. So the play-based spaces, unfortunately, at this point, we will not be able to do. The requirements to clean and sanitize and not share equipment will limit that. We do have a set schedule. Kids will have breaks. They will have brain breaks. They will have morning meeting times. We do not intend to have kids sitting in desks all day long. I know that's certainly how it looks like when it's on paper and what you saw in the community update last week. So that is not, not the case. But the play piece is going to have to take, take a backseat for the time being. We are, we are implementing the SEL, the Social Emotional Learning Program that we had promoted in the spring, that gets into a lot of the character education stuff that's just for kindergarten. So those things are still in place, but the play-based center, that will have to take a pause for the time being. Our elementary principals are responding to kindergarten pieces. I would hope in the next two weeks for us to be able to share more information with our kindergarten families.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. And it looked like there was another one kindergarten question as well, Desiree. So hopefully, yes, we need to do more to inform our kindergarten parents than we will. Amy Adams. So I don't know, Amy, if you had, had a question. It's more of a statement, and certainly see your statement in the chat on, you know, last year, we did have a high level of absentees, January, February. You know, nobody really knows what may have caused that. Certainly, we had a high flu season. We did see that impact the schools. You know, and the only response that I have is, yes, we understand. We have guidelines that have been handed down to us by both the state and the federal levels as to how we're to respond as a school. And then at times, we don't have the decision locally. So we're trying to respond to that. And yes, we understand flu. This situation has been dynamic since March, and we try to make sure that we're adhering to the guidelines and the requirements we have as a district. Unfortunately, that does mean we adhere to the guidelines that have been handed down Looking at Nat, question at 806, if we proactively keep our children home on suspicion of any symptoms, will we be able to utilize any remote learning options during that time? Likewise, should, should there be issues? Will we have to pivot between home 72 hours? That is exactly the goal, Nat, is to be able to pivot. Should we have to close schools? That we would have that option. I think the bigger question right now that we're still wrestling with is, is that asynchronous? Is it synchronous? So is there live components? Or is it just students completing assignments? Our goal coming out of the spring was to increase the level of instruction and have it be less assignment-based and more instructional-based. So how we go about doing that is certainly going to be a challenge that we're gonna, we're gonna continue to wrestle with from now till the start of the school year. But yes, we would have to be looking at the ability to pivot. Yeah, Dawn has a comment. Five hours a day when not in school, never going to happen with a working parent. Completely understand. The focus in the fall is going to be different than the focus in the spring. So we're not doing a continuing of Ed plan. We are instructing, and that's what we've been told by the state that we need to do. We're also looking at, we have 180 days we have to account for. We have 900 hours and 990 hours at the secondary that we have to be able to say to the state, our kids are working at approximately this amount of time over the 180 days to equate to the hours that we have to equate to. Otherwise, those days don't count as days of school. So the five to five and a half hours recommendation of what we're looking for is coming from that calculation of 180 days and having to have that five to five and a half hours of instruction a day. There'll be some students that will do less than that. There'll be some students that will do more than that. But that's where that, that number is coming from.
Mr. Beals, hold a breather. I can go through some of the questions here. Are you doing okay back there?
You can go ahead. I'll turn the light on in the room.
Mr. Beals, why don't we just do this? Why don't we go through the agenda? We do have one board at the end of the meeting. Give you guys a break. Maybe you can just take a look at some of the questions that are coming in and maybe consolidate some of them, and we'll move on from there for right now. Okay?
Hey, Mr. Beals, just a sound check. Are you hearing us okay over here in the meeting?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll swing back around at the end of the meeting and pick up the last additional comments. All right, moving through the agenda, CIU, Mrs. Schaefer.
Okay. Okay, we had an extensive discussion about the health and safety plan, and it starts to reopening September in the fall. And also various models of instruction. And the technology director, David Martin, said that the districts have shared concerns regarding adequate internet bandwidth and cybersecurity.
All right, thank you. VOTAC, Mrs. Eichelberger.
Yes, so they are dealing with the same issue we are. They are also doing a hybrid schedule on the first day for VOTAC to be August 26. They're also doing PAB Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, and then Friday is just going to be online only unless someone needs to. They are also following, for health and safety, they're also following the CDC recommendations. And they also, we also approved a new solicitor with stock and later.
All right, thank you. Dr. McLean, Polar Bear Foundation.
Yes, the Polar Bear Foundation did not need.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Young, are you with us this evening?
Not. I had.
Okay, you're on.
Okay. Mr. President, this is Mr. Laki. I move that the following checks be approved for payment. General Fund checks dated from June 11, 2020 to July 15, 2020, check number 326040 to check 326110, check 326113 to check 326164, check 326166 to check 326192, checks 326194 to checks 326239, amount of $1,086,254.92. And I already moved.
Jamie second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing that, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett.
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger.
Yes, Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mrs. Overton?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Another list of checks here. General Fund payroll checks dated June 12, 2020 to check 326037 to check 326039. Checks dated June 25, 2020 for check 326111 and check 326112. Check dated July 9, 2020, check 326165 in the amount of $9,987.71. Student Activity Account Check dated June 25, 2020, check number 531, the amount of $13,532.18. Capital Reserve Fund Check dated June 24, 2020, check number 455, the amount of $102.75. Food Service Account Checks dated July 28, 2020 for check number 8754, check number 8764, the amount of $48,134.13.
Jamie, second.
Motion to second, any discussions? Hearing that, Mrs. Ross.
Barnett.
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger.
Yes.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mrs. Overton?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Special classes.
And Mr. President, I move that the following check be approved for payment. General Fund Check number 326193 dated July 10, 2020, in the amount of $3,891.21 made payable to H&amp;H Service Company.
Jamie, second.
Motion to second, any discussion?
This is Mr. Black, staying from Bodie.
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger.
Yes.
Mrs. Overton?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mr. President, this is Mr. Laki. I move to approve and accept the July 2020 Treasury Report.
Jamie, second.
Motion to second, discussions? Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger.
Yes.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mrs. Overton?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
And Mr. President, this is Mr. Laki. Also included in the packet are reports from various accounts for the board's review.
Thank you, Mr. Laki. Mr. Rudy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the three facility use requests listed in the agenda this evening.
Mrs. Ann, second.
Motion to second, discussions? Hearing that, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett.
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger.
Yes.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mrs. Overton?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Special classes.
Quick inventory report, Dr. McLean.
Yes, I move to approve by consent items A through C.
Jamie, second.
Motion second, discussions? Hearing that, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett.
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger.
Yes.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mrs. Overton?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Special classes.
Quick inventory report, Dr. McLean.
Yes, I move to approve by consent items A through C.
Mrs. Ann, second.
Motion second, discussion? Hearing that, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett.
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger.
Yes.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mrs. Overton?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Special classes.
Thank you. Policy Committee report, Mrs. Schaefer.
Mr. President, I move to approve by consent the Policy Committee report. Policy says the final approval, final through six.
Jamie, second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing that, Mrs. Ross.
Barnett.
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger.
Yes.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mrs. Overton?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Special classes.
Thank you. Personal reporting report, Mrs. Eichelberger.
Mr. President, I move to approve by consent letters A through J. Mrs. Ann, second.
Motion second, discussion? Hearing that, Mrs. Ross.
Barnett.
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger.
Yes.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mrs. Overton?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Special classes.
All right, we have items for board action.
All right, Mr. Seacrest, this is Mr. Laki. I move to approve the meaningful charter school reform resolution.
Ms. Ann, second.
Second, any discussions?
Yeah, Mr. President, this is Mr. Laki. I know there's a lot of people that are contemplating what to do with their children for education this fall. And part of this charter form resolution is to try to reform the way that districts are paying an exorbitant amount of money every time one of our students goes to a charter school outside of our own offering. And so I would just ask the parents who are thinking about this to think hard and consider helping keep your students part of the Northern nation and keep them in our own charter school program, the NOLA program, because it makes a significant difference in what our revenue picture is going to look like, in our expenditure picture, as far as our budget. And 100 students leaving could bankrupt the district. So that's my only comment.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else? We have a motion, a second. Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett.
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger.
Yes.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mrs. Overton?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Special classes.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Laki. I move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Mechanicsburg Learning Center provided before and after school childcare program at Dillsburg Elementary School and South Mountain Elementary School.
Ms. Ann, second.
Motion to the second, discussion? Hearing that, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett.
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger.
Yes.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mrs. Overton?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Laki. I move to approve the Northern York County School District Athletics Health and Safety Plan.
Motion to second, any discussion? Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett.
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger.
Yes.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mrs. Overton?
Yes.
Mrs. Markle?
Yes.
Dr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest?
Yes.
Mr. President, this is Mr. Black. I move to approve the Northern York County School District Health and Safety Plan of July 21, 2020.
This is Melissa Second.
Motion to second, discussions?
Mr. Barnett.
Yes.
This is Michael Berger.
Yes.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mrs. Overton.
Yes.
This is Marco.
Yes.
Dr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest.
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest, this is Mr. Black. I move to approve the alternate 2020-2021 calendar with start date September 8, 2020.
This is Ann Second.
Second, discussions? Hearing that, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett.
Yes.
This is Michael Berger.
Yes.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mrs. Overton.
Yes.
This is Marco.
Yes.
Dr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any items for new business?
Yeah, Mr. President, this is Mr. Black. One of the things that's happened since the committee meeting and this meeting is that the window for the RACP grants have opened up. And that's a grant that Foundation, the Polar Bear Foundation, has helped us, or has been helping us pursue, to help fund the turf field project as well as lights at Bostic Stadium. That window closes on August 12. Dr. Ashbach has helped craft the grant. We're working with a consultant. That grant application will go in probably next week. And most likely, the grants will be awarded sometime in September or October. The grant request that the district has is for the turf field project as well as Bostic Stadium lights. So, the requested amount is about $2.7 million. So, if given that grant, we would receive 50% of the reimbursement, so potentially $1.3, $1.4 million in the grant in addition to the money that's already raised. So, it's a significant opportunity. We have our local senator and congresswoman that are supporting this, and hopefully we'll hear good news about this. We did have a motion to table the vote to bid the turf field project back in April for six months, so that would be coming back up in October. So, hopefully the timing is good. We get our grant award, or we get notice of the grant award, and we can get that back on the schedule and the board can vote.
If we have to do something sooner to get $1.3 million, we'll do what we have to do.
Yeah, as part of the grant application, we had to give them a timeline.
Right.
And so, the timeline is based on the board taking action sometime this fall and doing the project next year.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else? All right, Mr. Bezos, or Mr. Aguda, recognition of the public once again.
Yep, so, looking at some of the questions, and Matt, go ahead and mute. So, a question came in about the NOLA program and teacher certification, and yes, our teachers do need to be certified. The program has to be overseen by a certified teacher that's certified in the Commonwealth. The online instruction, but then also the assessing of student work. There is a fair bit in the elementary program of student work that needs to be assessed. It's not all computer-based assessments with quizzes and tests. So, there is the requirement of a certification in the area in which they would be instructing, at the grade level in which they would be instructing. So, we are limited to that. There's a question, Dawn at 8:12, about synchronous learning during the off days will be prerecorded, and then students will be able to get help once they are in school. That is exactly Dawn, our model of what we were intending, is that there would be kind of lesson one, let's say, is in an A group. Lesson one, the student is in the building. They have an extension activity that they're going to complete, lesson to watch at home, complete some sort of learning activity, come back to school on Wednesday. We now have lesson three. That student then goes home on Thursday and Friday and completes two things asynchronously with watching of videos as well as learning activities to complete. So, there would be that back and forth and continuous education that would go through. So, Dawn, if you're still on the call, you can go ahead and unmute, and I'll make sure that I answered your question. But I think what you've provided is exactly what we intend. So, not hearing anything from Dawn. Abby had asked a question at 8:12 about the face coverings. Yes, there's been some changes with face coverings in terms of what is acceptable or what is not. We'll make sure that we provide that information out. There is a bit of confusion over that. Certainly, the language has changed just in the last week from talking about masks to face coverings and whether or not cotton coverings would be appropriate, as well as face shields when there's the exception of that. So, we'll provide that information. Abby, that's an excellent question, and certainly that's changed in the last week. Dolly, when students sent home to quarantine, how close daily count mandate work will staff be paid for days required to quarantine? Dolly, that's an excellent question for our employees. Vanji's been working. She is our Director of HR. There are various options for our employees as how that would go through, and whether or not there's a confirmed case, a suspected case, or are they caring for a loved one or their child. And so, that's a question that's very specific to each case, and she'll be working, as well as our benefits coordinator, with our staff as it would apply to them. Dolly, anything to add? You can go ahead and unmute, but if I answered that question, we'll move on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So, my other question is down just a little bit, so you can skip over when you get to. My other question is, is on the last email that was sent out, it said that the elementary school is going to be starting at 9:15, which would give a 45-minute difference. But that really isn't a 45-minute difference, because elementary school generally starts at nine. So, by pushing that for 15 minutes, are we also pushing the middle school and high school times?
Great question. We are not. The elementary primarily was pushed back because for us to socially distance on the bus and do the runs, we're going to have some runs in the borough of Dillsburg, a little bit in Carroll Township, and then some over in Franklin Township where South Mountain is, where we're going to have to run more than one run. So, we'll do a run, drop kids off, go up and pick up some neighborhoods and bring those kids back. So, we certainly needed some additional time for that. And we were also looking at, when we were planning on four days with Friday, that was really to permit collaboration for the instructional teams to get together. So, by pushing it back, 9:15 is when we were allowed kids in the building. We've been kind of allowing kids into the building about 8:35, not 8:45 they're really coming into classrooms. We start our morning meetings and the day at 9:00 AM currently. The plan would be to start the day at 9:30. So, it's a slight pushback, but it's really to be able to afford us the time we need to run the additional runs that we'd need in each building and provide the planning that we needed for the instructional teams.
I also have another question, if you have another moment.
Yep.
So, with the students eating at elementary school at their desks, most of those classrooms in elementary school were peanut-free classrooms. You're not going to be able to stop parents from packing their students peanut butter and jellies, and I understand you're going to be cleaning before and after while the students are eating and so forth. But potentially, you're going to have peanut particles in the air. So, are you going to separate those students and have them eat somewhere else and not in the classroom with their fellow classmates, or is, how is that going to work?
Yeah, excellent question, and we'll be sharing that out. We did ask for the medical community to give us input into that. We do have some protocols for what we would need to do in the classroom. Standard-wise, when we're in the cafeteria, we designate a table or tables as allergy-free or allergen-free tables, and police to make sure that those things aren't happening at those tables. The fact that kids are eating at the desk, there certainly is the potential for airborne with open peanut shells. Thankfully, the majority of our families don't do that. I think we're all aware of kind of the tree nuts and certainly peanuts, allergies in school, and we do ask that those not come in. We can't mandate that people don't, but we certainly ask, and we do let families know when there is a child in a room. Again, as a community, as a school, as a family, we need to make sure that we're working together to protect everybody and those that have those sensitivities, we try to do. But we do have some written policies that our school nurses have been in communication on, and we'll be sharing that information out related specifically to allergies in the classroom, especially with food.
And then, just one final thing. So, obviously, the children don't have to wear masks out on the playground because of it being outside with air and being able to social distance. But the likelihood of a kindergartner, first grade, second grade, third grade, of social distancing when a playground is slim to none. So, how often is the playground going to be cleaned and disinfected? Because those kids are going to be on top of each other. They're going to be excited to see their friends, run around, play, play tag, hug, high five. They're just going to want it contact because of being at their desk all day.
Yeah, and so, we're prioritizing the little ones and their play equipment, and the cleaning of the railings, and the hand guides for that very reason. We're going to be closing down other equipment and not making it accessible, because we don't have the staff that can always get out there with the cleaning equipment and wipe everything down between each cohort. But we really, we agree with you. We think it's important that the littlest ones have that opportunity, and so, we're going to be prioritizing for that and wiping down the equipment, the railings, and so on, and so the handles that, so that they can do so.
That's everything, thank you.
Thank you. Some questions from Daniel. Daniel, I know you've asked several questions about NOLA here, with it being new and timeline for adoption being considered. Would second marking period be different from first marking period? I'm not exactly sure I'm following your question, so if you wanted to just kind of fill in if you're still on the call?
Yeah, I'm here. So, basically, I'm just asking, since the program is running, you know, in a whole different capacity than maybe it ever has before, would, are you planning or allowing for changes based on how the first marking period goes with maybe the number of kids in the program, and how the response to the program, how the kids are dealing with certain things that the teachers are providing? Maybe the teachers come up with better situations on how to provide some of the content, and maybe some of the parents give feedback on, hey, this worked really well, this was really hard for our kids to do, to then maybe adapt the second marking period and going forward so that you can continue in the NOLA program if it's, you know, necessary or you feel comfortable doing so? Or is it, once it's in place for the year, it is as-is because of consistency and timeline and hours to plan for all that stuff with the teachers? I'm not trying to add more to their already heavy workload. So, that's where more of the question came from was, how much wiggle room is there on this once it gets started?
Okay, yeah, great question. So, we did ask, as we plan, and kind of, this has been our process prior. The first two weeks of the school year, we have kind of open enrollment for the first marking period. So, we are asking families to commit to the first marking period. While it's aligned to PA core standards and PA academic standards, and we have a little bit of ability to modify the curriculum that's in there in terms of the order in which things are presented and the modules, it's not our curriculum. So, the going back and forth in between becomes very problematic. So, we've asked for families to commit to the first marking period. Certainly, if families wanted to continue and it was working for them, they would continue into the second marking period. And at those natural breaks in the school year, that's when we open up registration and allow more people to kind of move into those experiences, should whatever we're offering at that point in time not be meeting family needs. So, from the enrollment side, there'll be opportunities to both enroll and then decide, hey, you know what, I want to come back. In terms of the programmatic side, I think what March to Now has proven is we've tried to network with our families. We've tried to listen to parent feedback. I believe we've been receptive, maybe not as quickly as we'd like to. But when we've had the opportunity to get that feedback, we've responded and tried to meet kids' needs as quickly as possible. There's a lot of things we've been working over this summer that will be different than what we did in the spring because of the feedback and because we've learned from that experience. So, I would say iterations of this will continue. I don't think we can rest on our laurels and think we've done a great job until we've met every need as to, every attempt possible. So, Dolly had asked a question, and the secondary start time has not changed. It was just the elementary start time. We would still be bringing in students. The doors would open at our schools at 7:15, 7:18, and we would start homeroom at 7:40 in the morning at the middle school and high school, and we would end the school day at our normal time. So, there was no time change for middle school or high school. Moving down to some questions about the middle school with sixth grade, there is actually additional space in the middle school, and I have to give kudos to Mr. Sauer and Mrs. Murray and their staff, their custodial staff. There are some classroom spaces that are available. There are some spaces like the upper and lower lab spaces. The library space won't be used for library instruction, but will be used for classroom instruction. And then, we have some classrooms like the ag classroom that's only used two periods a day, and then it's available the rest of the day. So, they have maximized every available space that we have to be able to separate the students into smaller cohorts. But great question, and really, kudos to the middle school staff for trying to do that. They've also leveraged all of the teaching staff that they have. At times, there will be some station rotation things that we'll be doing where it won't all be, you know, direct instruction. Students will have some things that they'll be rotating through. But we are trying to do whatever we can do with our teaching staff and our support staff. So, question quick. Yes, elementary is going all five days. Question on who is responsible for NOLA in the case with problems with the curriculum. So, Mr. Edwards is our lead on this. He's overseeing COLA, to be honest with you. The numbers are getting so big that I think it's going to be a challenge for him to continue to supervise the entire K-12 program. So, he's going to take the high school. Mr. Sauer, who's the middle school assistant principal, will be the point person for the middle school. And Amelia Perry, one of our guidance council, school councils at the elementary, will be the point person for all of elementary. At the end of the day, the curriculum falls under my purview, and so, I've been engaged with them. I've done the training with Accelerated Education. I used to oversee COLA when it was COLA, and so, questions and concerns related to that. Certainly, I would start with the teachers that would be assigned to the children, and then from the teachers, we have the mentors or the pony contacts, which would be Mr. Edwards, Mr. Sauer, and Mrs. Perry, or Ms. Barry. Bus commutes, we do try to keep the bus commutes. Mr. Seacrest is sitting there in the pink on the video, if you can see him. This has been an issue that he has brought up many times because his child had bus rides to the middle school and high school that do push close to an hour. We do try to keep our runs under there. They are planned to be under an hour at the secondary level because of bringing in half of the students or roughly half of the students. We do believe the runs will occur a little bit faster than they normally would. We do have protocol on how students will enter the bus and how they'll seat on the bus. But we think with fewer students than we would normally be picking up, the runs would be going a little bit sooner. We do have bus runs in the district that can run about 54 to 56 minutes. We try to keep it under an hour. We do also see in our parent feedback and some of the surveys and what we've already gotten back from transportation office this past week, is many families indicating that they'll be transporting their children to and from school, which again, should also cut down on bus runs. But that question came from SR. I don't know if SR, you're still on the call, but if you are, go ahead and chime in. All right, not hearing anything. Question about the calendar, and if we're starting, why are we in June? Why if the days to start are going to go for teachers, are we still planning to end in June? Daniel, we cut out a lot of the days that were in there to try planning to end in June? Daniel, we cut out a lot of the days that were in there to try to make up for that. We had some days off that were originally in the first proposed schedule, and so we still try to honor the national holidays that we typically have, but we eliminated things like Columbus Day. We still have Farmer's Fair. We need Farmer's Fair, so that's still on there, but we did try to shorten the school year in terms of the days that we have off to make up for the time that we would have been adding those days. The school year did start previously in the previous calendar with three days, so we really were just front line, four days, and that's what we were able to accomplish. It pushes us back to the June 8th end date, which is just about one week later than we were. Another question about reading support, and I'll just kind of couch this and some other questions that have come up. So we do have our reading support, several of our reading support, our reading specialists that are going to training. We also have some special ed teachers that are going to training. We've had some gifted teachers that have gone to training all around. How can we support students with special considerations? Our ESL teacher, English of Second Language, that works with our English language learners, she is engaged in training, all kind of focused on how can we continue to support students? It will look different than what we would have normally done, but how can we support them in a remote environment? And they're a group that's interested in doing that. We're trying to figure out how that works with the structure of a course like ELA, Math, Science, Social Studies, and what that would look like to continue those services, but I can tell you that our reading specialists are engaged in that process and are interested in serving kids in our remote environment. And we completely get it, and that question came from SR as well, and there's definitely kids that benefit from those services, and we want to try to maintain them as best as possible. So question about charter program in NOLA and looking at, you know, why moving over to NOLA? Great question. We have done that in the past. We haven't had the opportunity to do that this summer, and we've had some feedback, certainly many loops of feedback from families as to why they're choosing one option or the other. But Dan, again, good comments there, certainly to take into consideration. Another comment just about free community-led program to assist in helping. I'm not on Facebook, but I get my feelers that they're out there in the community and share some things, so I do know of some of the Dillsburg Helping Dillsburg. I'm forgetting the community group offhand, but some community members are banding together to look for ways that they can support our families. I have been in contact with our early childhood centers. You know, many of our parents with younger children are kind of looking for the services that they need. We've had excellent conversations with our early childhood centers. We've had representatives that have been meeting with me, Mr. Young, all trying to determine how can we meet the needs in our community, and I'm aware of some community members that are doing exactly, Dan, what you're talking about, how can they help them meet the needs? This is constantly moving. We did have some discussion today. One of the early childhood providers in Mechanicsburg is no longer going to be working with northern families because of all of the requirements they have, and so that came down today. But I can tell you, we're engaged with early childhood centers, and they're a group that are also in need of trying to support working families in our community. We've partnered with New Hope in the past when we were doing the food, to provide food to families. So yeah, this is a community effort, and I like the thinking there, Dan. Please feel free to reach out to me. I was in contact today with both Norma and Becky, who are early childhood people, talking about the needs of families in our community. So SR had asked a question, and again, SR, this is something that we looked about cameras in the classroom. We did explore that. We did actually purchase some cameras and tested it. There's some positives and negatives to that model, but that is something that we've explored. I can't say we totally gave up on it, but as we were doing our planning of trying to focus on bringing students into school, because that was what the community was saying at that point in time back in June, we backed off of a plan to go fully remote. So that still becomes a possibility, but in terms of our health and safety plan and having to choose a model and send to the state at this point in time, we'll be choosing that scaffolding model. Doesn't mean it won't change. And I'll just kind of pause there. Any other comments from the board? I know I'm doing a lot of the responding. This has suddenly become a town hall meeting, which is okay, but Matt, if you want to unmute, if there's anything from the board or any board members that want to chime in, I'll pause.
Go ahead, Mr. Seacrest.
Yeah, I don't think this is going to end tonight if we continue. I don't know if we have other options as far as some kind of a town hall meeting. We're now on two hours here. A lot of redundancy, what I'm hearing here. I would strongly urge you to look at the information that has been sent to you by the district. They've done a very thorough, complete job in getting you as much information as possible. So I think we'll give it a couple more minutes here. Any board members have any questions?
My only comment is, I'm sure a lot's going to change between now and September 8th. We still have August board meeting. We have a committee meeting, so I would just encourage community members and those folks that are on virtual meeting tonight, you know, just to stay engaged, and we'll have more information in three weeks, you know, for our next committee, and we'll have more information the following week. So this is definitely not the end of it.
No, nothing close.
Things may change between now and September 8th, so we're doing the best we can, and the administration is doing an incredible job, you know, keeping up with the changes that keep coming down every day.
Just to the community, this is Mr. LeBuda. Please don't feel the need to wait till the next board meeting. We're here. Reach out. We'll do our best to get back to you as soon as possible. If there are questions, you reach out to Mr. Beals or myself and email, phone, and we'll do our best to get back to you as soon as we can.
Thank you, Matt.
So I'm not opposed to staying on this NOLA program and the board meeting. I can continue to answer questions, but Mr. Seacrest, if you want to conclude the board meeting, I'll stay on and answer any parent questions that come up. So go ahead, Matt, and unmute.
And so if anybody has any final comments, any public, feel free to go ahead.
I wonder if Miss Meany.
Yeah, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Seacrest. Mr. Beals, thanks for being willing to stay on and answer questions.
I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Any items for future agendas?
Yeah, just a reminder that we do have that six-month table that comes up for the October meeting.
I would accept a motion for...
A second. James, a second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Barnett.
Yes.
Mrs. Eichelberger.
Yes.
Mr. Black.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoeder.
Yes.
Mrs. Markle.
Yes.
Dr. McLean.
Yes.
Ross.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Seacrest.
Yes. Okay. Once again, I want to thank the administration for all the work they have done in putting all this information together. No matter what decision is made, there's going to be folks who are not happy either way. We're doing the best we can as a district with the information we have, and to Mr. Hilleke's point, when we meet here back on August 18th, it could be completely different. So again, adaptability is the key to this whole thing. Our next meeting is August 18th with our voting meeting then on the 25th. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. LeBuda, if you want to mute, I'll just kind of take over from there. For those of you that have been on this call, our board meetings are recorded. We do post them. We may not be able to get a full accounting of all the comments this evening, but we'll try to get this posted to the website. I'll stay on and answer questions. I'm going to discontinue the recording at this time. The board does go into executive session following the board meeting. No board action is taken during an executive session. We have a few issues that we need to talk about. Those primarily deal with legal matters and personnel. So I'll end this recording. Thank you for those that have joined us this evening, and I'll stay on.